I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Let's see. Oh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
And Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you. We want to change the order of our agenda tonight if possible. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to move the public comment to the next section, next item on the agenda.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So we will have that next. We also have another change on the agenda, and that is number...
Number four.
Number four. Councilmember Mead is not going to be able to make it tonight due to a family emergency. Okay, so we'll go on to public comments. Do we have any... The first first public comment is in front of me, and it is printed, and we just want to just add it to the record. And that is from... Oh my goodness, I can't read the handwriting.
It's at the top of the page.
Oh, here it is. David Henry Zito Meyer, and the subject is about driving in school. And so that'll be added to the records. Okay, so we have some people in the audience, so City Clerk. Joan Bryson, you'll have two minutes at the podium.
Only two minutes?
Two minutes each.
Well, maybe we can... We don't have to have them stand there.
If you speak loud enough.
Yeah, we can.
No, we definitely do. You want me to use a mic?
We need a microphone so the online audience can hear you.
I have a complaint about the crosswalks without without lights. As we're entering into the fall season, some of us live in the assisted living down there, and crossing the street is very difficult sometimes, especially when it gets dark at 3:00 in the afternoon. And some of the incidences I've had is crossing the walk in the middle of the walk, there's a truck coming down, bearing down, it must be 40, 50 miles an hour, had to stop. Trucks can't stop suddenly, and I can't run with the walker because I could trip, so I don't want to fall and then find out that the angels have come to take me upstairs. I don't want that yet. And the other thing is, we had a car. I'm standing in the crosswalk, and there's a car coming down to my from my left, and the car went around into the oncoming traffic to avoid us. Not a good idea. And the same thing, same incident. Another car came from the other direction and tried to beat me across the street. Well, I let him beat me. I wasn't about to race him. So my concern is, if we could have lights that we could activate, a lot of these people can't really tell that these are crosswalks because they're not obvious. And I would like to have some lights that we can activate. And one of the suggestions I have, there's two crosswalks, one down at 234th and one right down the street here, I'm not sure where it is exactly. And what I'd like to see, not only are the lights that we can activate, but some kind of a light up the roadway that says something like "slow crosswalk in use" or whatever. I think some, I've seen them in other places when I've been a driver, and I'd like to see them at both ends, because there's the below south of 234th and also up in this area so that they stop. And I'm hoping that... Now, I'll be pushing you guys, because with the fall season, if I want to go to the library and I come out and there's fog, guess what? I'm in deep doo-doo. And also, if I come out and there's heavy rain, sometimes, you know, I come across, I won't come over in heavy rain, but if I come out and there's heavy rain, as you well know, we don't see well in heavy rain around here. It's all gray. And I will try to wear bright clothes, but that doesn't always occur. So my push is to have the lights activated in the two crosswalks that we have, and I appreciate your concern. And you'll be seeing me again till you get them.
Our next speaker is Paula Gaisen.
Guy in, the guy wants to come in.
Thank you. You'll have two minutes.
My name is Paula Gaien. I've lived at the plaza across the street for six years, and I'm complaining about the noise from Diamond Knot. Monday through Thursday, their hours are 11 till 10:00. Friday, their hours are 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Saturday, their hours are 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Sunday, their hours are 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. I've called many, many a time to non-emergency number to ask for help. What they do is, the workers there, they go behind the building of Diamond Knot, and they they talk really loud, and the workers, I wish the supervisor there would talk to their employees that there are people that live at the plaza. I'm on the north end of the building, and I can't have my window open because that's all I hear is them talking. So thank you very much. Is there a noise ordinance here for Mount Lake Terrace?
That's something that council will be able to respond to after public comment.
Thank you.
William Page, you'll have two minutes at the podium.
Okay, I'm going to apologize in advance for zooming through this. I thought I was going to have about three minutes. So I'll get right at it. Around 8:30 last night, my wife Ellen asked me, have I seen the post on the MLT Arc Facebook page about a poster that was hanging in the pavilion here in the Mount Lake Terrace? I didn't know what she was talking about, so we went to the page, and I saw the poster that all of you have now or will have. I was shocked, to say the least, especially when I found out how long the poster had been hanging there and no one had addressed it. By that time, there were now 30 comments by MLT residents on the Arc page. Ellen and I kind of talked about it a little bit. I shared how images like this, Charlie Brown and Little Rascals, shaped how I perceived what type of person people thought of me as growing up as a small child. This morning, within 12 hours, there were 130 comments from residents in Mount Lake Terrace on the MLT community, city, as well as the Arc Facebook pages regarding the poster. I'm not going to comment about the poster. You have it in front of you, and I hope that you go to the Facebook pages to see what your constituents had to say and recognize the need to have some discussion about how does the city go forward. Three things jumped out at me, though, from the comments that I read on Facebook that I want to share with you. First, how in the heck does something like this go unnoticed for such a long period of time in the pavilion? Do residents not care, not understand, or just didn't feel safe bringing this to someone's attention? The second thing that jumped out at me was the range of racial racial bias knowledge and racial bias ignorance that was displayed amongst the residents on social media. Third, and most important, were the questions that our residents were asking. Is this a DEI issue? What is the city going to do about it? And what is the city going to do to make sure that all of their employees have a better sensitivity lens towards racial bias going forward? At the last city council meeting, Deputy City Manager Hope presented you all with the idea on how to utilize the DEIC consultant. She recommended training not just to DEI commissioners, but all council members, board members, commissioners, and staff. This poster and the responses to this poster illustrates the importance and the need for this action to take place. To sum it up, the Red Cross owned and apologized for this poster seven years ago. How did it stay up this long here in Mount Lake Terrace? Whose responsibility is it to address this? I want to thank City Hall for acknowledging this and promptly by 11:30 this morning, sending out an apology to those who were offended. The city has presented with an opportunity here. Let's take it. If perhaps you weren't that enthusiastic about the idea of all the commissioners, board members, staff, and council members going to DEI training before, I hope you are now. Our residents are looking for answers from us.
If there's anyone in the online audience who would like to comment, please use the hand raised tool. Going once, going twice, that's the end of public comment.
Well, we have more people that came in. Maybe we should ask people in the audience.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment who didn't sign up?
Thank you. All right, so next will be the city manager's report.
Jeff, you're frozen. There you are.
Okay, now it's moving.
Oh, you're muted.
Okay, is the microphone working?
Yes, thank you.
Trying to figure these things out on the fly. So, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of council. Carolyn and I are coming to you from sunny Spokane. It's been over 100 degrees for the last couple of days, so we are very much looking forward to getting back to the west side of the state where it's hot, but I don't think it's been quite that hot. A couple of things I wanted to mention to you this evening. First, you may have seen an update from our police and Ace Hardware. So there's a community fixture named Doug, who is has been part of our community for a long time, walks around town and picks up cans for recycling and uses a string of carts to do that. And unfortunately, last week, one of Doug's carts was stolen, and the police association, after talking to Doug and taking a report on that theft, went to Ace Hardware and was prepared for the police association to purchase Doug a new cart. Ace, very graciously and thankfully, decided to donate a cart to Doug, and that's picked up some local media. That act of kindness, and we really want to appreciate Ace Hardware for for making that donation. Should be on Como News here shortly. Couple other things. The next and final, this year Movies in the Park is coming up next week on the 24th, and we hope you'll all you will all be able to join us for that. Next, the notification letters for the new road projects that we'll have coming up that council approved several weeks ago. We'll be going out to residents to make sure that our communication plan is robust. We make sure all the people that are going to be affected by these road construction projects know about it ahead of time as best we can. So those letters will be going out either tomorrow or at the latest on Monday. And lastly, Snohomish County has asked us for a letter of support for a, what is it called here, a 2023 Community Wildfire Defense Grant application. So we'll, we, I think it's important for all of us to participate in those protection plans for the fires, especially considering the effects of the most recent fires in Maui and what a terrible tragedy that has been. We want to take every step we can to to protect our community from those types of events. Happy to answer any questions, and that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? Councilmember Sonmore?
The first thing he mentioned about an event coming up next week, I missed what that was. If you just repeat.
I missed it, too.
Movie in the park.
Oh.
Yeah, that's our our last Movies in the Park event for this summer.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted, while you're while you're on, Jeff, wanted to see if you could just kind of follow up quickly about the some of the public comments, particularly related to the noise ordinance, which we do have, but maybe you can provide some details or at least follow up with the citizens that commented on that. And also appreciate whoever was involved in making sure that the poster came down immediately once it was finally recognized.
Yeah, we do have a noise ordinance. Unfortunately, I don't have the hours in front of me, I believe, and please don't quote me on this, because I will look it up and make sure that the hours are 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. However, I'm not sure if that is only related to construction or all noise. So I will follow up with Paula, I believe it was Graham, but we will follow up with her for sure and get those those things addressed and see what we can do talking to talking to the small business community there in that little strip mall. The other item on the poster, and I think Mr. Page said it very well, it's a very teachable moment for us. The fact that nobody noticed it in the seven years since the Red Cross has initially apologized and removed the poster is just a reminder for us that these things aren't at the forefront of our mind, and they should be. So we will definitely be taking advantage of this teachable moment to make sure everybody we work with and come in contact with is cognizant and pays attention to those types of things that may not affect us as individuals, but do affect people in our community and people we care about.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right, thank you very much. Then we'll move on to the next item, which do we need to vote on that? Do we need to vote that we're taking it off?
I don't think you do, Mayor. I think that I will reach out to Councilmember Mead's staff members and see if we can get that presentation rescheduled for a future date.
All right, thank you. All right, so then we'll move to the next one, which is the presentation on the Lindwood Link Connections with our King County Metro Transit. I don't know who's going to talk, but is it Luke Distelhorst?
Hey, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us tonight. My name's Corey Holder with the service plan at King County Metro. I'm the project manager for the Lindwood Link Connections Mobility Project.
And I'm Luke Distelhorst. I'm a senior community engagement planner with King County Metro and the community engagement lead for the Lindwood Link Connections Project.
Also, I do live in Mount Lake Terrace, so this is cool to be here on this side as well and have it covering both. All right, so some background on our project scope and what we're looking at here. So with four stations opening on Link Light Rail in 2024, going shoreline south, shoreline north, Mount Lake Terrace, and Lidwood City Center, looking at opportunities for revising our network to better connect to this new service coming online, also looking at additional station in 2026 in Seattle at 130th, as well as changes on the State Route 522 corridor with a new bus rapid transit line. So even looking at a network that will incorporate all these changes. Our budget's made up of 23 routes in our system that interact with these upcoming stations or travel along those pathways. 15 of those are all-day routes, eight of those are peak-only routes, routes that just kind of run the Monday through Friday, traditional commuting hours. So looking at all those routes is our budget for potential for change, and we are looking at any hours that are currently suspended since the pandemic on those routes as well or assumed to be restored as part of the hours for the final project. Our project area in the yellow area on the map, this is where we've really been targeting our outreach, as well as our equity analysis, so looking at folks who live, work, travel within this area, includes Mount Lake Terrace, and coordinating with Sound Transit through the process as well around their planning for the 522 corridor, as well as also coordination with Community Transit, who has their own already approved plan for 2024 restructures, keeping that in mind as well. So our project goals, number one, first and foremost, we want to improve mobility for priority populations as defined by our mobility framework. We're an important part of our current and potential customer base. At Metro, we define priority populations as Black, Indigenous, and other people of color, folks with lower limited income, folks with disability, immigrants and refugees, as well as diverse language speakers. Secondly, we're making sure we're equitably informing, engaging, and empowering our current and potential customers in the project area, especially really making sure we're amplifying voices of priority populations in our engagement. Third, delivering an integrated service that responds to this Link expansion and other changes and updated community needs, doing a network that'll really allow Link to do what it does best with that high-capacity frequent transit and not duplicating that and providing connections that supplement that. And lastly, want to improve the efficiency, effectiveness, and sustainability of our transit system through these goals. So an update on where we're at in the timeline, we're here in Phase 3. So last year, we went out for our Phase 1 engagement, which was a needs assessment. So really just going out with a blank slate, hearing from community what the top needs are. That did develop our top six really needs we were looking at for the project that we wanted to address with our proposed changes. That led to, in Phase 2, earlier this year, we were out with the first lines on a map that really incorporated those needs that we heard, received a really tremendous amount of feedback on that Phase 2 network, had some really great engagement. There were well over 5,000 survey responses. We had lots of qualitative input as well through partnerships with community-based organizations and other in-person outreach. So really listen to all those all those that feedback we received on the network, which really led to a lot of changes between our Phase 2 proposal and the Phase 3 network that's out right now. This is the 4-3 structure like this I've worked on, and it's really the most changes I've ever seen between Phase 2 and Phase 3. So, you know, those that feedback we heard really did inform the network here where we're at in Phase 3. So we have that engagements currently open, about 10 more days, closing on August 27th. That's open now, which that will be working towards getting towards our King County Council in the first quarter of 2024, and ultimately leading to the changes being implemented in the fall 2024 service change, which is right at the end of August. So I mentioned that Phase 1 needs assessment. So what those needs are that we heard, they were our top priorities. They informed that Phase 2 network and are still informing the changes we made for Phase 3. The number one thing we heard was creating new and improved east-west connections. Always heard that's kind of the most difficult way to travel in the area via transit, so really looking at ways to improve that. Second, providing transit to and from important community identified destinations, especially where priority populations live, and also looking at dense housing development coming by 2026 in our plans. So really looking at putting service where needs are greatest. Third, improving nighttime transit service. This is something, you know, we hear more and more demand for, a lot of late-night travel demands, especially as Link will be running late as well and providing that connection to that. Fourth, maintaining and improving frequencies on routes that connect to or from major destinations, and also high-capacity transit, so really looking at a focus on frequency where we can. Fifth, improving weekend transit service, especially to major destinations, so a lot of proposals in here that have improved weekend service from today. And lastly, with all these changes, really looking to ensure that our transfers are convenient, accessible, and reliable, so especially for priority populations as well, but ensuring frequent-to-frequent transfers where we can. So some of the key areas that informed our Phase 3 network, I won't spend a lot of time here, because a lot of these were kind of more in Seattle, but just so you can get a feel of kind of the issues we heard and how we addressed it. Number one issue we heard with our Phase 2 network was a lack of service on the southern part of Lake City Way. Some changes there did leave a gap. We heard loud and clear, people want to continue a service from Lake City down to Roosevelt Station, so address that with a new route in the proposal. Second, service at Linden Avenue near 135th, so it's kind of very specifically the Sanford-Hildebrandt Towers, so there's a lot of senior and income-eligible housing there in our Phase 2 network. They were served a little less directly than they are today, where there's a pullout directly in front of the towers, but heard loud and clear the importance of maintaining that more direct service, and, you know, a longer walk was was not appreciated there, so I've made some adjustments there as well. Heard some concerns as well of Fifth Avenue service north of North Gate Way had a gap in the Phase 2 proposal. There's a large senior housing development there as well that had similar issues of wanting that more direct service, so we addressed that by continuing to send Route 75 to North Gate in the proposal, which addressed another concern as well, that was a connection from Lake City to North Gate on Route 75, so maintain that. Fifth, we did hear concerns about getting from northwest King County, specifically from Aurora Village to First Hill. There's a couple of peak-only routes that provide that today that we had proposed replacing. Did hear a lot of concern about three-seat rides getting to First Hill from Aurora Village, so decided to maintain one of the routes in the proposal to maintain that peak-only connection. And the sixth one in here is a is an interesting one that really highlights some of the feedback we heard from our community-based organizations, that was one that didn't come up as highly in the survey, but Route 65 from the north part of Lake City, a change we had, it kind of broken up the connection from the Little Brook neighborhood to Nathan Hill and Jane Adams schools there. Heard, you know, a lot of concern about that, and it kind of made changes to maintain that connection in the Phase 3 network. And to some other general issues we responded to in Phase 3 as well that speak to the needs, especially from Phase 1, frequent all-day service in shoreline on both 145th and 175th, we addressed. Those are also on a route that connects to Mount Lake Terrace, so relevant here as well. Continuous service on Fifth Avenue in shoreline between 185th and 145th stations, we addressed that with a new route. There was feedback about loss of continuous service on Meridian and shoreline. We did partially address that with some changes. More segments of it are covered than in the Phase 2 network, as well as multiple east-west connections that serve the main intersections along Meridian. Overall, better evening and weekend service, a theme, and number of routes in the proposal have improved evening and weekend service, including two that serve Mount Lake Terrace that I'll speak on in a moment, and just overall improved east-west connections, that there's a lot of improvements there overall in the network. Overall highlights of our Phase 3 proposal, so one, we're really leaning on Link Light Rail providing a very frequent north-south service, and that allows us to make more east-west connections that do not exist today. So allowing Link to really act as that spine and providing a lot of east-west connections that reliably connect there. Maintaining or improving access in our equity priority areas. Those are our census block groups that have the highest numbers of priority populations in them, so really our network in the end covers all of our highest equity priority areas. Connections to schools and community destinations is a big theme. Relevant to Mount Lake Terrace, there's a connection to Shoreline Community College with a direct bus. And overall, continuing to shift towards more of an all-day frequent network that has more evening and weekend service and less peak-only service. Of those eight peak-only routes in our budget, only two of them are maintained, both going to First Hill, and all those hours are used to really create more all-day service. And the sixth item I'm excited about is a new metro flex on-demand service area. So these are point-to-point service, where you pay a transit fare, then is pay a regular metro fare, and you can transfer to other services in the area. But this is a new area north of Ballenger Way and State Route 522, so covering the north part of Kenmore and Lake Forest Park, as well as the southern part of Mount Lake Terrace, so providing a connection to the Link Station here, as well as the future VRT on State Route 522. I'll have a little more detail on that in a moment, too. So just speaking to the routes that serve Mount Lake Terrace in the Phase 3 proposal, I'll start with a revision to Route 331. So this is a route that operates today between Shoreline Community College, Aurora Village, down Ballenger Way, and onto Kenmore. So a couple of changes proposed to this route. One is revising it to go to the Mount Lake Terrace Station, so making a diversion up for a direct connection there via Van Ry and 56th. Also extending it from Kenmore to Bothell, so this would serve you to Bothell on the east side, Shoreline Community College on the west side of the route. It would run later in the evening than it does today. Currently runs till about 7:00 p.m. The proposal, it's run to midnight on weekdays and 11:00 p.m. on weekends, so a big jump in evening service on that one. And overall, this would be a 20-minute, every 20-minute service in the peak, 30-minute service in the off-peak. So Route 333 would be a new route in the proposal that connects between Mount Lake Terrace south to shoreline through North City, east-west across 175th into Shoreline Community College, and then on the south end of it between Shoreline Community College and Shoreline South Station via 145th. So really hitting a lot of key destinations in shoreline, connecting from Mount Lake Terrace. And service on this would run every 15 minutes during the day, seven days a week, and 30 minutes in the evening, running roughly 5:30 a.m. to midnight, providing connections near the beginning and end of Link. The route this one route this would replace is Route 347, so this would replace Route 347 between Mount Lake Terrace and North City. 347 between Mount Lake Terrace and North City. And the Metro Flex area, so north Kenmore, Lake Forest Park, south Mount Lake Terrace, I think we'll need a cleaner name in the end when we get there. This would be a new service, yeah, serving portions of Lake Forest Park, Kenmore, a little bit of Shoreline, and south Mount Lake Terrace. So connections to Link and Mount Lake Terrace Station, or stride 522 BRT on the south end of it. A lot of areas of this have no current transit. In particular, one reason for looking at that is there's a area right on the county line in north Kenmore that was one of our equity priority areas and was actually the only one in the proposal that did not have service. So this does create that connection there, and an area like, street network-wise can be pretty challenging to serve with a big bus, so this has a lot more flexibility to get through some kind of difficult street network. That does overlap with an existing Metro Flex area that's in the Juanita, kind of south Kenmore area, so this would enable a connection between the two at the Kenmore park and ride area. And, you know, as you'll note, this does span across both counties. Kind of what we proposed in our initial proposal is what fits in our Metro budget, so our initial proposal is a weekday 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. range, but we are communicating with community transit on this, that they have a lot of interest in partnering on this as well to potentially expand the service hours, that this is some, some areas in kind of southeast Mount Lake Terrace and south Briar, they've had difficulty serving as well, that this overlap would provide a good partnership there.
I guess we have a question.
Yes.
Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you mind going back to that previous slide?
Yeah.
I can be very literal, and so I was trying to figure out, is the area that says Mount Lake Terrace Station future covered or not covered? I'm trying to figure out, is it almost like the shape of California?
The station would be covered in this area.
Well, I'm trying to figure out, so if you go on the right-hand side further up, I presume that's like 220th?
Yeah, it's kind of following the arterial here.
Yeah, and so in that area there where this, where the arrow was, a little bit further to the, our left, the white area, yeah, is that area covered? Which, this building would be outside of 236, this is actually 232nd crossing right here.
It's not covered in the proposal as we have it for Phase Three. Definitely interested in, in hearing about that.
Well, I, I would, I would just be curious how 220th up to, I presume that's like 48th and to the right, I'm not sure, is in that area there how that's covered, but not this way. And I'm selfish here. Many times, many times if I had to take the 119, but I have to wait an hour, or I walk it, and I usually walk it, but I usually regret it about halfway through, all things considered, right? And I'm a pretty decent, fit person, so I go, wait, how did, we not get covered? Just putting that out there as a, you know, I think all the way up to 220th, you might see better ridership, because it's still uphill. A walk is still uphill.
I see that my, my, I'm not going to be covered either, but the majority of Town Center is not covered. So something to think about, maybe, and CT, I didn't even, you know, they haven't even mentioned Mount Lake Terrace. They, they have always talked about Darrington and Arlington and, and so forth on their expansion of zip.
And that's, I mean, this is one of the reasons why we want to do these presentations, to exactly get this feedback from you all about what the priorities might be in this community, so we can look at that, because these are kind of, as Corey mentioned, bounded by a lot of arterials, and some of these, a lot of these roads just don't go through, so we're really limited in the borders. And then having this engagement really allows us to kind of fine-tune that, and definitely those talks that we're having with community transit, because as you're saying, they have a prioritized list, and we have a very close to ready-to-go solution, and if there could be a financial partnership there, then we could really look at both the borders, the size, that operating hours, et cetera.
And that'll be covered under ORCA card?
Yes, we cover under ORCA. The transfers are covered.
Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to hold this till the end, but since we're having such a good and robust conversation about the Flex area, figured I'd jump in now, and really excited about it in a lot of ways, and excited about lots of this, but I'll try not to, try to, you know, tamper that down here at the moment. I think what we're looking at is 44th up to 228th through Briar. I'm pretty sure that's because I've looked at it previously, and so I guess my other advocacy, and I've had this conversation with our, our community transit folks as well, and love to hear that schools is a big part of your prioritization. So our middle school for Mount Lake Terrace and Briar is located just north of that line, but far enough north that it's, it's a hike, and it does not currently have bus service, which, you know, is a, an access issue and an equity issue that we would love to, to solve for, and, and so they did mention this when I brought that concern forward, when we were talking about some of their updates. And so I don't know how we can support that continued conversation to, to think about slight expansion in, in this proposal, but I do think that in particular is, is a really hard thing for us as a community, particularly as a community who does have lots of folks who don't have access to transit, who will probably have lots more folks in coming years who don't have access, or sorry, don't have access to vehicles. And so would love to figure out, and it's not a, it's not a great walk, to be honest, for Mount Lake Terrace, those that have walked 228th, which I have, because I took a bus up there once, because there is very limited commuter service, but then I had to walk back, and you go down the hill and then up the hill. It's fine to, to Councilmember Woodard's point, like, I can do that, but, but that is not necessarily an easy answer for, for everyone, and so I guess I would love to hear more about how we support those continued conversations in a timely manner to potentially look at, you know, cover, it would be great to, I think, cover our library and City Hall, given the closeness, but particularly the school, I think, is one thing I would love to, to talk about.
Thank you.
Oh, Mayor Portan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes, while we're, while we're here. I really just want to thank you for even thinking about Mount Lake Terrace or including Mount Lake Terrace and recognizing as the public does, the public doesn't care about city boundaries, county boundaries, we just want to get from point A to point B, and it doesn't matter if it's in Mount Lake Terrace and Shoreline or across the county line. So thank you. Thank you for recognizing that real service is about serving the people that need the service, and, and including us in that, and, and as, it, it looks like you're further along in serving Mount Lake Terrace than our own community transit may be in some ways in serving Mount Lake Terrace, and we really love this Metro Flex idea, but we've been, you know, they came and, and talked about their program as a test pilot in Linwood, and now looking at some other communities up north, and we're like, what about us? We'd love to have that. I think it's a fantastic idea, we'd love to see it serve, serve our community, and if it's not community transit, we would love to have Metro service. So thank you for looking at us, and we certainly would love to partner in any way we can to serve other parts of our community that aren't necessarily being looked at currently. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think one thing we were really looking at this, too, is Route 347 does kind of a backwards C over to 48 today, serving a chunk of Mount Lake Terrace, south Mount Lake Terrace. The routes we do with the opening of Link are kind of more streamlined to, you know, hit directly to the station, so this was looking at a way to like, how do we, you know, mitigate kind of that change in service, so still, still serving that area in a different Okay, I'm going to hand off to Luke to give an update on the public engagement now.
Thanks, Corey. So again, Luke Distelhorst, Senior Community Engagement Planner. We're now in our third and final phase of outreach, which is really exciting. As Corey mentioned, we saw a lot of changes between Phases Two and Three. This is my third Link Integrations project, formerly with community transit, now with Metro, and by far the most changes I've seen between a single phase of engagement, which is super exciting, because now we get to go out to the community and say, hey, here's what you told us, and here's how we've responded. So this final phase is very similar to Phase Two, I would say, in the level of engagement that we're doing, but we've tried to take a step back a little bit. As Corey mentioned, in Phase Two, we went out with that very specific feedback that we were looking for, sort of route by route, street by street, so you could do a 60-question survey if you really wanted to dig into your transit nerdery. In this Phase Three, we've gone back to the kind of the network level and said, hey, can you get where you need to go with this network that we're proposing? So it's a little bit shorter survey, it's kind of higher level, and we just want to make sure that we haven't broken connections that people really need as we've made changes and updated it based on their Phase Two feedback. And this is our final city council meeting of Phase Three, so we're excited to be here for that reason as well. For our general public outreach, we really try and show up in the community in a lot of different ways. Some things you might see are our digital communications that go out with our blog and our social media, news releases, those sorts of things. Those are kind of really high visibility, but they're a very small part of what we actually do and spend time on with our engagement. Most of the, the items that we're doing for this two months is engaging with priority populations, community-based organizations, key communities like educational institutions, income-eligible housing providers, doing outreach at transit centers, park and rides, high-ridership bus stops. Those are where we get not only the, the kind of qualitative feedback, hearing how people are experiencing the system, but also the quantitative feedback through people taking our surveys. A lot of times, those are, are the most meaningful interactions we hear with, from people, because they're on our system every day, and they have experiences that just really come through in a much different way than just sort of a numeric survey result. So as Corey mentioned, we really take all of that into account and kind of, side by side, look at what we've heard through our survey, look at what people have told us in person at our transit locations, look what community-based organizations have told us, and kind of blend that all together, and work with our Mobility Board and Partner Review Board to then further analyze that, prioritize it, and allow them to make decisions as well. So one thing on here that a lot of people don't see, but we always try and highlight, is the tabling that we do at our operations bases. So our bus drivers are usually the people that you interact with the most in terms of transit. They operate our system safely every single day, they see the riders, they see where people are traveling to and from, and they have a lot of insight into how to safely operate a transit system. So Corey and team have been at our north base down in Shoreline, talking to operators and getting their feedback, because it's so important that they feel like they have a safe system, that they can operate, and that they can make the connections that people in our community need. So a few times, we've mentioned our CBO partnerships. These are paid partnerships that we do with local groups to build our engagement into the community work that they're already doing. You know, we don't always want to ask people to come to our online open house, though we'd very much like you to come to our online open house this Saturday at 10:00 a.m., but we know that our events aren't always accessible or at great times for people, and these are groups that are already working in their community, engaging with their local residents. And so we have paid partnerships with them, not only to build our engagement into their work, but hopefully provide them with a bit of financial capacity building as well for them to put back into the community. So when it comes to our community engagement budget, you know, we don't spend money on advertising, zero. You know, this money goes into community groups that are doing the work and engaging with riders, and then providing that qualitative feedback back to us. So they talk to their communities, know where they need to get to on a daily basis, and then provide that to us, and we can build it into these different phases of our projects. So lastly, surveys, I know they're long. Corey wants all of your network feedback, I also want all of your engagement feedback. After you take a survey and there's questions on whatever the subject is, usually some demographic questions, usually there's some questions at the end on engagement, please fill those out. Support community engagement professionals. We really do take it into account and change what we do, not only project to project, but also phase to phase. So in our last phase, as Corey showed you, our project area is pretty big, and so we heard from people in like north Ballard or Bothell, they're like, Linwood Link, it's so far away from me, there's no way my route is part of what you're doing. And it is. And so then that person has missed that opportunity to, to provide feedback on, on the route that they ride. So in all of the alerts and kind of all the major communications that we've been doing, we've been naming all of the project routes, so someone gets that email, and they live in north Ballard, and, and their route is listed right there. So we've tried to make that connection better for people. Also, I think for the first time, we're seeing that the physical bus stop signs are where most people are learning about our project. I think in Phase Two, it was like 23%. In this current phase, it's closer to 30%. So just like the sign that you see in this picture, we're seeing just a proportionally higher amount of people learning about our projects from seeing a sign at a bus stop. It's really interesting, but we, we take that into account and we adjusted. So we had 90 signs up in Phase Two and did 123 signs in Phase Three. That included new signs in Mount Lake Terrace, because we, Metro doesn't have much service here right now, but with that new Flex area, we wanted to kind of elevate that to people to get to the project page and see this new idea that we had. So we upped the number of signs that we've put out in community. There's some other smaller things we've done, like the King County webpage was updated, and it had some new banner functionality. So we've had a Linwood banner across the Metro homepage for the last six weeks. And as mentioned, we have a shorter survey in this phase, and we've simplified how we've presented information. Transit in general is not always that user-friendly, I think we can all agree on that, and so we've tried to simplify how often about a bus runs, what are the major destinations, and a map, right? And make it very similar to what someone would see right now if they visited a route page on a community transit or a Metro website, and not have a whole narrative that someone needs to read through to understand a route. So yeah, please answer those questions, we're always trying to improve what we do. So as Corey mentioned, we opened on July 10th. I think we're just up to about 3,000 surveys put in so far. We're open for another 10 days or so till August 27th. All of our materials are available in the project languages that we have there. If there are other language access needs, we pay to have everything translated, in case there's language access that's needed. We also do all of our open houses with live interpretation in three languages, and we can add live interpretation in other languages if there's a request. This last Tuesday night, we had our second open house, and we had our first request for ASL interpretation, which we were able to provide. We have our third and final open house, 10 o'clock this Saturday online, and then we'll be at the Celebrate Shoreline Festival at Cromwell Park in Shoreline on Meridian and 180th from noon until 9:00. So it's a close-by event for Mount Lake Terrace residents. And then we'll wrap up on August 27th, and then move into reviewing the results with our Mobility Board and our Partner Review Board, and then making final tweaks before we take it to County Council. So in that process, I'm sure there'll be some touchbacks with staff in Mount Lake Terrace, so we can keep you updated on how the network progresses. Thanks.
Okay, do we have any comments? Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Luke. And Corey, excited to, to see the expansion of service to include Mount Lake Terrace here in, in this update, and, you know, really, really love the consideration for us on, on this side of the invisible line, if outside of, of the, the Metro taxing district, I think Mount Lake Terrace residents really stand to, to benefit a, a lot from, especially the, the Metro Flex on-demand tool. I don't think we can really overstate the, the potential importance to, you know, getting folks to, to the, the Link stations or, or anywhere else they're, they may be trying to go. I think this will be a real game changer, and I'd personally be interested, as, as others have already said, in, in how the, the city can, you know, even put some more skin in the game to, to make sure that all of Mount Lake Terrace residents have a, an opportunity to call this service. And I'll just, you know, before I get off my soapbox, really, I think this is a, a beautiful example of, of how close we are to a lot of our, our other communities. I love that, that, you know, in this conversation about Mount Lake Terrace, we could talk about Lake City and Shoreline and, you know, places that are really, you know, less than five miles away, but, you know, have a few political boundaries in, in the, in, in between them, and really excited at the sort of the connections Linwood, Link, and CT and Metro, you know, service shifts and expansions will, will bring to us. So really want to thank you and your, your organizational sort of efforts, you know, so tell the, the King County Council and Executive that, that Mount Lake Terrace appreciates the, the consideration, because it's, it, you know, will be terrifically beneficial. So I'll leave it there, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Go ahead, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, since I didn't start off with just thank you, yeah, I think a lot of excitement to appreciate you taking the time to come and share the work that you're working on. Really excited about the new route to Shoreline Community College and the directness of that. I think that's super exciting for our folks here in Mount Lake Terrace and who are commuting, you know, on the light rail to have options there as well. I guess one question just around, because I think you touched on kind of most of one of my questions, but with the 347 going away, I guess for folks that, I'm curious if we have any idea how many folks that impacts as far as folks getting on and off in Mount Lake Terrace. I know that's a really specific question, but I guess I'd be curious if we know kind of the impact. And then I guess as far as communicating goes, obviously you guys are doing lots of amazing work and I think you have great ideas that I'm like, oh, we should do some of these things. But, and I guess some of my question is just around, like, will there be physical signs like at the bus stops that, I mean, that the route is going away and like sharing info about the Flex service with plenty of time for folks to, I assume, but I guess I just wanted to make sure that people aren't showing up one day trying to get to work and, you know, catch the 347 and then finding out that, oh, it's gone. So that's, yeah, that would be my question.
Yeah, the question about like how many, does the removal of the 347 impact? A number of the stops, you know, still would have a different service, you know, at a same or nearby stop, kind of at the same intersection. It's largely the diversion out to 48th that would be kind of stops that aren't directly replaced. Those are kind of all on the 10 or less riders a day on stops. Some of them are a lot lower, but I think the highest is around about 10 riders a day on it. Some of those, you know, as mentioned, are also adjacent to other stops, so.
And yeah, regarding the outreach around like a big service change like this, yeah, signs, and then we do a lot of in-person outreach too. So for a normal service change, it's handled differently. For a large integration project like this, where we're changing almost the entire network for the northwest portion of the county, yeah, we do a lot of not only physical signage, but in-person outreach. We'd be doing a lot of alerts. We'd be doing kind of the same level of effort for a month or more in advance, as well as promoting any new Flex service that we would launch to because we'd want to make sure people don't just understand that the bus may not be coming, but here's the way that they can now get to where they want to go.
That's awesome. Thank you so much. I appreciate all of the effort and really excited to see those updates when they go into effect.
Okay, so the survey, it's on there at kingcounty.gov, Metro, Linwood Link. For us, we can just go onto our laptop here and get it, but for the rest of the people out there who want to take that survey, they can just go to that to visit kingcounty.gov metro/linwoodlink.
Yep, and even kingcounty.gov metro, and then if they scroll down one little, maybe two clicks on the mouse, there'll be a banner right across the homepage that says Linwood Link, and they can click there right to get to the page.
And I like the fact that you're including Snoke County, Mount Lake Terrace, and it's, you only had one route in Mount Lake Terrace at one time, and now you have, I saw several.
Yeah, today it's just the 347, and this would be two routes plus the Flex Service, so going from one to three.
Which is huge, which we need to expand.
And I will say that, you know, we've presented to the North King County Mobility Coalition, we presented to Snow Track, you know, Bothell, Lake Forest Park, and more. And it is one thing that we continually hear, as many of you have mentioned, is that the border is administrative and there's so many people that it doesn't matter. They need to go north, they need to go south, they need to go east-west, and really we're trying to find solutions for these areas as opposed to very strict, you know, city boundaries or county boundaries, so.
Yes. Did you notice that one of those routes went by in a sardine? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, you gave me a window to say thank you, and this is coming as someone who uses the system quite a bit. I used it today to go down to South Seattle Central College, and there was several agencies that got me there, and it was beautiful to know. All I had to do was keep swiping and it was all one price for the most part. That said, I wanted to acknowledge that you're going down Van Rye, which I would say is definitely a wonderful addition. Curious, however, because those turns right next to the school are a little bit tight, if that's been part of your discussion, or if that's now kind of one of those, well, we'll work through that as well, which is fine. But thank you first and foremost, but at the same time, curious about that little pinch.
Yeah, we have coach-tested all the proposed kind of new pathways in Mount Lake Terrace. So we've twice actually, now on the Van Rye, I know it was on one again recently when we were testing the new transit center, we took it one through there. But yeah, we've taken it through Van Rye and also making turns down 56th as well, which we don't currently go on, so that it worked out fine on Van Rye. Got to get a little slow in parts, you know, over the speed bumps, but it worked just fine. Yeah, excited about, looking at Van Rye as well with, you know, with Terrace Station and everything there too, seems to make a lot of sense for ridership to serve that.
All right, anyone else? Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so next is our presentation of the 2023 Second Quarter Police Department
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protim and Council. For the record and impeding people in the audience, my name is Pete Combs, the Police Chief of the City of Mount Lake Terrace. I have with me Commander Scott King. To my right, Commander Haines is on vacation camping, so he'll be with us next time for the next quarter report. The second quarter report reviews department goals, philosophy and methods. Current progress toward achieving those goals is presented as well. You'll see some what I call boilerplate material that you've seen at every council meeting. I keep it before and in the reports just for context. Statistical data illustrates crime trends, including notable increases in vehicle thefts and vehicle perils, largely in most professional opinion tied up in the opioid epidemic and the narcotics use we see on our streets right now, which we'll address in some links later on in the report. This continues to be a regional problem. The report features analysis of enforcement actions, ties those actions to area demographics as usual, training, staffing patterns, code enforcement, and public outreach are included. Two case studies complete the presentation. The first involves a stolen vehicle recovery and arrest, which illustrates some of the issues created by recent legislation limiting police pursuits. The in-car video recounts an incident in which the suspect driving a large F-250 pickup truck repeatedly rammed several patrol cars in an attempt to violate the escape arrest. This is not the first time this has happened with the apartment. This is the second incident of this type with Mount Lake Terrace Police in the last year. And the second case study presents a serious assault that occurred on the interurban trail along with the investigation resulting in an arrest and felony charge. Last time I met with you, there were some questions about the Blake decision and the drug legislation and the pursuit legislation, so I'm going to give you a thumbnail explanation of the progress we have made in the past year. In our next presentation, we'll talk about some of the impacts, some of the earlier police reform legislation had on where we do business and some of the changes that occurred since. I'm going to start with the Blake decision that deals with use and possession of narcotics in the state of Washington. Really came back to a 2021 decision in Spokane County. I jokingly say that this case started out as a, those are not my pants defense. A young lady was arrested and booked into the Snoke County Jail. Within her pocket was found a small amount of methamphetamine. The statute of Washington at the time made that a B felony, punishable potentially by some time in prison. When this case went to the Supreme Court, it dealt with the word knowingly, which was not in any meaningful way contained in the statute. So the mere possession in your pants when you were booked into jail made you guilty of possession of the crime, and the Supreme Court thought that was a bit of a stretch. Also, the burden of proof of that person knowingly possessing the drug really wasn't addressed in the case. So what happened, the Washington state law was thrown out. There was no remedy presented as a legislature when a reasonable amount of time, so drugs really became de facto legal in the states of, on the streets of Washington. Dealing drugs has always been a felony, continued to be a felony throughout all that time, but the mere possession of a controlled substance was not enforced as a crime. The next iteration passed in the legislation reaction to that was to pass an ordinance making it a misdemeanor, however, requiring officers to make full referrals to drug treatment plans. Logistically, that proved a real problem, just the logistics of keeping track of who was warned, what jurisdiction it was in, how many times. It became very burdensome and quite frankly, was an abject failure in terms of remedy. Fast forward to this year, finally, we have some legislation that really addressed the issue. In a sensible move, the legislature made possession, a simple possession of a controlled substance unless you have it for sale to be a gross misdemeanor and took out the requirement that officers would refer people four times before it was prosecuted. There's still a strong incentive for officers to refer people to treatment as a possible avenue off-ramp to incarceration. And as of yesterday, the law is in effect and it is in fact a gross misdemeanor to possess a controlled substance. It is still a misdemeanor to possess prescription narcotics that are not prescribed for use. They did make a distinction about illegal substances that are prescription pain pills and obviously are what seems to be a scourge on our society right now, the possession of fentanyl and a lot of other knockoff opioids, cocaine, methamphetamine, and heroin. So that's kind of a thumbnail sketch of where we were and where we're at. It's a much-needed improvement, a lot of phone calls between police chiefs and legislators to get this stuff done. And in my view, they did a passively good job in getting this done. I'm not going to compliment much about the timeliness of this, but it was a grand experiment that, in my opinion, failed miserably. We're back to really a sensible approach to the problem with the off-ramp of treatment as a strong option. Moving forward, I won't get into much of the minutia of this, but in 2021, there was a House bill passed which really limited police pursuits, which is the second question you wanted to ask us to talk about. And it really focused on verbiage. It pretty much forbade police pursuits, except if the officer had probable cause that the person he was trying, he or she was trying to stop had committed a violent crime. It's an unfortunate use of words. Probable cause is a standard we have to meet for an arrest. The standards for engaging in a pursuit really should have used the term reasonable suspicion. So let me give you a hypothetical to illustrate that. Let's say for instance that an officer is dispatched to a bank robbery and the suspect is reported to be a white male wearing a blue coat leaving in a green pickup. And the officer gets there and he sees a green pickup leaving at a high rate of speed and tries to stop that green pickup. Under the old standard of 2021, if that officer, if the suspect driving that pickup did not stop, the officer could not engage in a pursuit, even though it was a violent crime, because he didn't have probable cause. What he had is reasonable suspicion. Now, these are both legal terms, but if you understand the difference, an officer clearly has reasonable suspicion that the person driving that green pickup is the guy that robbed the bank. But under the statute, it has existed until this year, he would not be able to engage in a pursuit if that vehicle did not stop. So moving fast forward, the legislature has changed the standard to reasonable suspicion, and I think we can all agree that reasonable suspicion in that situation probably existed probable cause. Do you have enough probable cause to say that's the person that robbed the bank? Well, I think common sense would tell us that he's probably the fellow that did it, but you do not have probable cause. So now we've reformed that standard and we're back to a situation that is more sensible. However, as you'll see in one of the videos, that did create a problem for us because up until this point, quite frankly, the people that commit violent crimes didn't know if, when they refused to stop, if the officer was going to engage in a pursuit because that standard for engaging in a pursuit differed from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. The standard we set here is one of risk versus benefit. If a person robbed a bank and you engage in a pursuit, that's a pretty high risk of just letting them go. It's a violent offense. However, the risk of the pursuit is got, there's a certain amount of risk associated with that. So you do this measuring stick, is it still sensible for me to chase this car considering it's a bank robbery? And until the pursuit gets to the point that it's very dangerous, the answer to that is yes. However, if we're just trying to stop a stolen car, not a violent crime, and the pursuit gets somewhat dangerous, I think that risk goes up and the balance airs on the side of not continuing a pursuit. What happened with the legislation is, it let everybody know that in this situation, an officer can chase you, in this situation, he cannot. So it increased the amount of people that refused to stop for us and other agencies tenfold. It's very, not uncommon for a common traffic violation, the person just refused to stop and keep going. It happens every day. However, this new legislation has really lowered the standard to be reasonable suspicion versus probable cause. But what has still happened, the legislation has still contains a list of crimes that you can chase and a list of crimes you cannot chase. So the decision-making that probably should have been left better to police executives like myself is now legislated and everybody can read it. It's reformed the situation a great deal, but as you'll see in one of the videos, we're still suffering from this malady of people not stopping for us. We have a legal reason to stop. So without getting too much into minutia, if when this presentation is over, you have some questions about the finer points of that, I'd be glad to answer them. But I tried to keep it at a really high level without getting too much in the weeds here. So on with the report. The first page of the report, again, we're going to just put our mission statement in front of you. Again, boilerplate, just to use context. Goals, philosophy, we're still talking about the former President Obama's Task Force on 21st Century Policing, Building Trustome Legitimacy, Policy and Oversight, Technology, Social Media, Community Policing, Crime Reduction, Training and Education, Officer Wellness and Safety. As I said before, until I see something better, and I haven't yet, I'm going to keep using this. I won't go over this too much, but this is the method Hyman Rickover, who's a father of the Nuclear Navy, suggested to his executives on how to get to your goals and some standards to maintain. There's seven of them. He's an interesting fellow, there's a lot written about him. Onto some goals. These haven't changed a lot since last time. One of our goals is to provide a safe community for everyone, utilize department resources effectively. One way we've done that's been a great success is the Drone Program, Unmanned Aerial Vehicle Program. It gives us time, distance, and shielding, makes it safe. We use those drones to search buildings when we think there may be some, we use them outdoor areas to find people that are running from us or people that are lost. So it has a variety of applications that we've used on a regular basis. We have one vehicle devoted to this, and I have six drone pilots. We like to call them sky pilots, but they have undergone a high degree of training and they're very committed to what they do. There isn't a day goes by we don't either deploy those drones on our own or assist one of the area departments in that endeavor. We focus on community policing and standards. We still have the embedded social worker program, and as I mentioned many times, we get that for free, which is a great price. We continue to promote outreach programs like cops and clergy. Sergeant Porter is a part of that. We meet with them quarterly. We'd like to have a better attendance, but we're working on outreach to get those folks in to talk to us. Utilize the e-bike program. I think you saw those folks riding on bicycles during the parade, during national night out. They're electric bikes and even guys like me can ride them at high speed as long as you want, so they'll, they were a good investment. We're collaborative with regional law enforcement agencies. We detectives participate in the Regional Intelligence Group. I have an embedded detective in the U.S. Marshals Violent Offender Task Force. It's a real force multiplier we use all the time. Incorporate education and long-term solution strategies with enforcement, utilize code enforcement, animal control to help maintain a clean and inviting environment. Recruit and retain quality personnel, replace retiring department members. High standards for personnel selection, provide opportunity and challenges for personnel, focus on succession planning. We've talked about that before. People are retiring, we need to find people to replace them and us. We use a lot of high-tech mechanisms like spider tech, outreach into the community. We use a lot of high-tech mechanisms like spider tech, outreach into the community, we command review of all critical incidents. We just recently went on, underwent our onsite accreditation and have every anticipation will be re-accredited for about the 20th year in November at Waspik. We came across as a, as a clean site visit and a lot of the stuff is done remotely. So I give most the credit to my assistant, Joey Werden, for completing most of that, but I'm sure we will be successful. We operate a comprehensive and robust in-service training program and I focus on finding candidates of differing backgrounds in diverse communities. I will have some of those folks in here to meet you when we, when we're finally done hiring, we think you'll be amazed at how much they look like to face the community rather than what they used to look like. So big success there. Like to listen to community feedback, which is easy to see, a lot of social media out there to read and talk to people. We update and modify policies promptly. We have an internal, we have a robust internal training program consistent with legislative mandates. Some of the stuff I just went over with you at a very high level. We're as transparent as we possibly can be. Recognize community, we recognize community support and trust as paramount to our success. We're proactive in incorporating improvements and efficiencies in lieu of a wait and see approach. And of course, we try to be fiscally responsible. We are after all spending taxpayer dollars here. I will now turn it over to Commander King for some other items.
All right, I'll start with staffing update. So Sergeant Brquette in the middle, he's on the right-hand side.
I think we had a question.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I go to staffing updates, you might, well, actually you don't have to go back any slides. I was curious about the social worker. I absolutely agree what a wonderful deal we have going on. That noted and thinking about goal H there, fiscal responsibility, I'm curious if you have concerns, and let's just tie it into light rail since that's a tangible endpoint in changing who comes in and out of your city potentially speaking. Do you have concerns that we might need more than half-time status? And should we as a council, from your perspective, be thinking about how to fund that or if there's even mechanisms in which to do that? So just so we kind of recognize that, hey, we're changing, that might mean this deal isn't as great as it could be.
Thanks for asking that. One of the, one of the things that we've discussed at several meetings is the use of the opioid lawsuit money. I would certainly like to think about, particularly if the free program runs out, either enlarging it or replacing it. We'll kind of a wait and see approach, but absolutely, I would be totally in favor of enlarging that program. There is a certain sentiment in the legislature when they decide about funding those things. If, if that social worker, and you'll see this in other areas, particularly in Seattle, if that social worker should indeed be embedded or independent, there's, most police executives have a certain concern for the safety of those people if they're operating independently. And also that makes them a little bit less useful in terms of what we can send them to, because we really need to get there and make things calm before they get there. But oftentimes that, that kind of contradicts the reason for sending them if we have to show up and solve the problem and we're not exactly equipped to do so. So in answer, that's a long answer to your question, but yes, I would be totally supportive of enlarging that program. I think that's one of the biggest successes that's come out of the past five years. It's getting some of that business out of our hands and into the hands of professionals that really know what to do and what to say.
All right, so the middle photograph, the gentleman on the right, that's Detective Sergeant Scott Brquette. So he just recently retired after 27 years of service. Officer Eric Jones on the left there, he retired after 20 years of service. And Sarah Nelson, she was one of our newer record staff personnel, but she decided to move to Florida and leave us, which was unfortunate because she was doing very well. So a few that we lost. And then here, so Megan Sheets, she was a sergeant. We promoted her to detective sergeant and she's doing a great job. Officers Luther Russell and William Wigan both graduated the Basic Law Enforcement Academy. They both have completed their FTO process and they are solo out on the road now. And Marlena Moran was hired as our records specialist to replace Sarah. And Angelica Rivera has been hired as our police services specialist. We used to have a cadet, but we kind of revamped that position and Angelica's taken over that spot. So some 2023 second quarter stats compared to 22 stats. Our calls for service have gone up and some of that has to do with some of what Chief Cott talked about with some of the crime rates going up recently. Our community oriented policing, we have made more contacts, so we're out and about doing more in the community and you can see the numbers up there. Traffic stops have also gone up, but we've directed more efforts towards traffic safety and we have more participation in the TCT program, which is the Target Zero Task Force. And that, that's a grant program throughout the state. So if we have officers working that grant money pays for them to be out there looking for DUIs and traffic safety issues. Infractions are up and that's due to our increased traffic safety and TCT participation and same thing with the citations that you see there. Arrests are up and I would think that that probably has to do with our call volume going up and some of the crime rates. DV crimes are pretty much the same as they were last year. We have one, one more than we had the year before. DUI arrests are up and that also has to do with our traffic safety efforts and our participation in the TCT program. And vehicle prowls are up as well as burglaries. And so this is a graph showing our demographics from all the terrorists. And this is a graph showing our infractions by race. And this is a graph showing our arrests by race as compared to the demographics. So Officer Froisland and K-9 Harley have continued to be active in our community. On the left, you'll see a picture of Officer Froisland and K-9 Harley at South District's Law Day, where they have fifth graders, local fifth graders come in and they experience different things within the law enforcement and court system. In the middle, you can see one of their fines during second quarter. And of course, there on the right is K-9 Harley. Like Chief Cott talked about, our drone program is very successful. The drones help keep the officers safe, creating time, distance and shielding. And they also help us safely apprehend suspects and find missing people. And up there you can see some of the totals for the second quarter. Training, like Chief Cott said, we have a robust, robust training program. Up there you see Officer Russell and Wigan completed their field training like I talked about earlier and they're in solo status. The department hosted several trainings. Up above, you'll see two of those. One is realistic de-escalation instructor training and the other one is cell phone mapping for investigators. And the entire department completed CPR training, Public Records Act refresher, and everyone completed their firearms and less lethal certifications. Officer Custer continues to stay busy processing evidence and staying active in the community. She continues to do park checks and educates the public on different animal issues. So records highlights, they continue to work very hard. They do a lot for us. Our two newest members, which are Marlena and Sherry, they've been doing a lot of training and getting up to speed, really for record specialists their whole first year, there's, there's a lot to learn to do that job and they've been doing and doing very well. During that, the second quarter, the record staff processed 177 pistol transfers, 43 CPLs, 127 public disclosure requests, 152 criminal sites and 298 traffic infractions. Code enforcement. So code enforcement continues to increase their participation with the city code enforcement. They're integrating their responsibilities across all code enforcement domains. The actual enforcement process remains focused on the city's vision to create feelings of safety welcoming throughout the community by abating code violations and nuisance conditions. This is done by education first, second voluntary compliance agreement, third written notice of violation and finally abatement. We had two abatements scheduled for the second quarter. One, just a week prior to the abatement, they gained voluntary compliance, so we didn't have to do the abatement, which was great, which is what we want. The second property we abated, and this was the second time we actually had to abate that property, and we've been having trouble with the homeowner there and the residents complying with our voluntary compliance stuff. So it's an ongoing project with that residence. Community outreach, as I discussed earlier, our community contacts have increased and here just, here's a few photos of our officers out and about in the community. Cops and clergy. So the faith leaders in our community are called to serve beside us and are officers during tragic events. Some of those events include crime scenes that are vital to law enforcement investigations. In the second quarter meeting, Officer Elrod provided instruction on law enforcement crime scene basics and the role of clergy in and around those scenes. He also built a mock crime scene in the police department garage so he could walk participants through a practical exercise. We had great feedback from all the participants in that and there were some Support Seven personnel there and they actually requested that Officer Elrod teach that same class to Support Seven, which he did two weeks after the cops and clergy. So great success. And of course, our embedded social worker. So this is Officer O'Hagan with our embedded social worker, Heather Turner. Officer O'Hagan's been reassigned temporarily to patrol sergeant position. We're getting a chance to kind of show what he has. In the meantime, Officer Martin Look has taken over that spot and he's been working with Heather out in the community.
Before we get into this video, this is rather violent, I want, I want, first of all, I want to warn you on its face, that evening was terrifying to the officers and the citizens that saw it. But you'll hear some shots being fired. Those are not firearms, less lethal rounds that were fired. Firing at a moving vehicle that's six or 7,000 pounds is never a good idea. You still have a, if you incapacitate the driver, you still have a rather heavy moving missile, so that's probably not a good tactic. Well, you can bring fire to some less lethal rounds to break the windows and introducing some chemical agents into the cab to get him to stop doing what he was doing. And this case was successful, but as you can see, the video is pretty dramatic. And again, this is the second time this has happened to us. We're talking between those two situations, four wrecked police cars. So serious situation.
Yep. So this is a case study of the stolen truck. Originally, the officers were dispatched out to where the stolen truck was for a noise complaint, just a truck idling at 5:30 in the morning. Ultimately, they were non-compliant and attempted to flee. This is what the call looks like when it comes out to us. It came out at 5:28 in the morning, just of a pickup truck that was idling. It was a diesel truck, so they could be kind of louder. When the officers showed up on scene, they read the license plate out to our dispatch. Our dispatch advised that it was a stolen vehicle and the officers could see that there were two subject in there. And we, we say they were slumped over, they were sleeping in the vehicle, but with the way they were positioned with the car running, it was highly suspicious that they were probably high in narcotics.
And there was the position of the vehicle was such that the officer decided to safely use the approach of the vehicle, open door and pull them out. Very tight quarters, hence the decision was made to have a different time, distance and shielding approach, which you'll see.
And you can see, so is that the 23100 block of 52nd Avenue West, which is the Pheasant Hill condos? Here's an overhead view of the condos where the truck was parked. And this isn't the actual truck, but just to give you an idea of the size of the truck and what it looked like. So this is an aerial view of where the suspect truck was parked and where other vehicles were parked around it and some structures that were there, just to give you an idea of how it was looking. When officers arrived on scene, because the subjects were slumped over sleeping, it gave them some time to develop a plan, like Chief Cott said, develop some time, distance and shielding. They put out spike strips and found positions before they contacted the vehicle. They also, you can see they pinned in the vehicle, one, to prevent them from fleeing with the current trends of vehicles fleeing. Two, they also thought that the occupants of the vehicle were high in narcotics and we don't want people out on the road driving DUI or impaired. So they wanted to prevent that as well. Of course, that's the suspect vehicle there. So now we're going to play the video for you. All right. I need to go backwards here, trying to get the video going. What you're missing out on in the video is the officers turning on their, their microphones and calling out loud to the suspects. And they're continually giving commands to the driver. And you see the, in the video, this is super loud, but the trucks backing into the police vehicles there trying to get out. And you can see some of the smoke from the tires. So at this point, they're firing a less lethal munitions at the windows to try to create
At this point in time, the sergeant's going to put a stop to this, going to move another vehicle around to push against the pickup. It's a large pickup we're using here.
Chief, can you talk into your microphone, please?
At this point, you'll see the
Turn it on.
You'll see the sergeant getting his vehicle and put a third vehicle in that interdiction, that's him right there, which is finally what stopped the situation. The suspect has four flat tires, the cab is full of less lethal agents and he's still not stopping.
And you saw Sergeant Elrod, or sorry, Officer Elrod walk across the screen and the weapon he had was actually the sage, the less lethal munitions. and the weapon he had was actually the sage, the less lethal munitions. Sergeant Moss here is pushing the car, hopefully in a position where it won't be able to ram anymore and be stuck.
This becomes a reverse tug-of-war with the F-250 in front in full reverse and the F-250 in back in full forward, and just a question of who has the most muscle at this point. Very dangerous situation, however.
Chief, what's the total collapse time of term?
So he's probably less than 10 minutes.
So that's the end of the video. What happens from here is the truck stops, and officers are able to take the driver into custody.
Now, the last time this happened was at the Motel 6. And when we finally saw the situation, which was the worst situation, this actually, the fellow had two handguns in the pickup. So this fellow had quite a lot of fentanyl and methamphetamine onboard. He was always dealing drugs and using a bit of it himself and then fall asleep in the parking lot. He did not live in those apartments. He just simply parked there.
All right. So next, I have a case study from Investigations. And this is a study where an elderly male was assaulted on the inner urban trail, and the suspect fled after assaulting the elderly male. And here's how the call came out to officers. It was reported as assault on the inner urban trail with about a 10-minute delay. An elderly male was assaulted by an Asian male, suspect 20s, stocky build, wearing a dark hoodie. So the male victim had been beaten unconscious. He had no memory of the event. He was unable to recall basic personal information at first. Witnesses on scene stayed to assist officers with the investigation and give suspect descriptions. So the suspect's sighting and identification. Sergeant Sheets was flagged down by one of the witnesses once they made it out to the road and advised that they had seen a subject match in the description of the suspect drive-by. Sergeant Sheets advised over the radio of the vehicle description. Just by chance, an admin sergeant had seen that vehicle and run the license plate and had that in their, in the memories of their computers, so they were able to get that out. With that information, officers were able to obtain the information about the vehicle and where its address was. Officers took that information and made contact at the address of the associated vehicle. At that address, they were able to make contact with the suspect, who admitted to being there, but said he had nothing to do with an assault. Upon identifying the suspect, officers found out that he was previously arrested for a similar assault in Linwood and was known as a violent person for an assault on law enforcement. Officers, unfortunately, were not able to establish probable cause at that time, so the case went to detectives. During the detective investigation, they were able to locate surveillance cameras near the trail by where the assault happened. Unfortunately, they didn't get the assault on surveillance, but they did have surveillance of the suspect running to where the assault happened and running back. So they were able to establish probable cause through their investigation for the suspect's arrest. The detectives waited for quite a few hours by the suspect's home for him to get there and to arrest him. Eventually, he showed up and he was taken into custody. He was uncooperative, but safely taken into custody and booked into jail. Any questions?
Do we have any questions? Comments? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. And as always, thank you both for coming and presenting and for all of the work that you do. Like I said it oftentimes, but I guess an example of it showed up here this last quarter or since the last time you came, where, you know, somebody who's been involved, a resident who's been involved with the city in various ways, shared that they had a strong dislike of the police prior to living in Mount Lake Terrace. Through their engagement with you, you know, they had really shifted their perspective and really appreciated the way that the police here in Mount Lake Terrace interacted, which came in handy when they needed support, you know, for themselves and their families. So I will just say again, I appreciate the way that you show up. I appreciate that you hear feedback, and I think that's always reflected in these updates, is so much of, you know, the work that you've been doing and that what you come back and share to us, I think, is reflective of things that our community has asked about or had concerns about, or that we as council have brought forward and asked questions about or wanted to learn more about. So just very grateful for that. And I guess I did have a couple of questions. One was about violent crime stats. I don't think that those, we had, I guess, like violent crime-specific stats. Is that, I guess, is that something we could, I guess, if you have knowledge generally, I'd love to understand just if we know what the trends are there here locally. But if not, that would be helpful to take a look at at one of your upcoming visits.
Okay. Anecdotally, I can tell you that violent crime across the region is up considerably. Again, we can attribute it to a lot of causes, but what we're going to do with our reports is, our next report will be very statistic-heavy, and the report of that will have more features like this one. So we're going to, the reason we haven't done statistically-heavy reports every quarter is, it's really in terms of gathering information, it's really better to do that in six months and one year until to kind of see patterns. Patterns typically don't evolve in three months. Occasionally, they do, but typically, they don't. So the next report will be more statistically-heavy and have less feature in it, although there'll still be an entertaining feature, I can promise you. But that's the plan.
I appreciate, I think that's a great idea, and appreciate, again, kind of looking for ways to continue to, you know, improve upon, you know, making sure that these are informative for us and for the community, as well as making it hopefully easy and the cadence making sense. I guess the only other question that I had was around the Target Zero Task Force. Could you just talk a little bit more about that partnership and the work that you're doing associated with that?
Sure. We, the department's actually been involved with Target Zero Task Force since I've been a police officer here. But it's, our participation's kind of gone up and down over the years, and right now, we have quite a few officers who are involved in it. And really, out of all the South County agencies, I'd say we're one of the most involved right now, which is great. So it's, there's money that the state puts into this, that's grant money, and they'll put out, like, the Fourth of July will have, they'll have emphasis going out, because maybe that's a high time for people to be out drinking and driving. And they'll put sign-ups out there, and we'll have a person or maybe two sign up, depending on the availability of our cars, actually, because we only have so many cars we could put out. But when we do that, what's nice for the city is that all that grant money pays for the officer being out there, and it pays for an overtime officer to be out. The work that's done through that is just awesome. I mean, to go out and to get extra cars out there, stopping DUIs and saving lives is really a big deal, and I think stopping DUIs is one of the best things we do.
It's got a unique It's kind of a unique system. The TZT officers, they pick an area of the county to emphasize, and all the officers from various jurisdictions go to that area. So let's say a couple of Mount Lake Terrace officers join in the emphasis in South Everett, well, that's where they're going to work that night. Or the Everett officers come down here, so you'll see a plethora of cars out of the area working somewhere. They just dump a lot of resources in the one area. Jurisdictionally, that's not a problem in the state of Washington, it's a general authority state, so it's just a question of what court you file this site was. But if you see Everett cars making traffic stops in Mount Lake Terrace, it's because that's where TZT is that particular time. So it's not, we look at the highest rates of accidents, the highest rates of DUIs, and we target that area.
And they call it Target Zero, because the goal is by a certain date to have zero deaths out on the road.
Thank you. No, really appreciate the explanation, and I appreciate the participation in the program. And I think we have heard a lot about traffic safety in particular here recently, and so it's great to hear about opportunities that we are taking advantage of, and sounds like we have for a long time, to plug in to improve that, and would love to continue to learn more about that, I think, in the future. So thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you both, gentlemen. Really always enjoy your, these presentations, I guess, always, I think this is my second one, but really enjoy learning about what policing looks like here in Mount Lake Terrace, and appreciate your presentations. I had a couple of questions, just sort of driven by the number slides here. You know, I think you've spoken a bit about the fractions being up nearly double, and, you know, with the explanation about Target Zero. But, you know, as I see the theft and vehicle prowls being up, you know, three and three times and two times respectively, just curious about, you know, what's driving those trends to the degree you can speak to it? And then also, I know I've had, the last couple of years, some immediate neighbors and general, general across the city and region, you know, catalytic converter thefts, wondering, you know, what you're seeing there. I know it's not broken out on the slides, but wondering what the experience is there. I'm just going to go down the list, and you can respond. I noted the domestic violence was just up by, you know, one incident or one call here this, in this last year, but I know that we saw an increase over the pandemic, and I'm wondering if we're sort of maintaining at a certain level of increase, say, you know, coming out of the pandemic, and if you have any sort of thoughts on that trend? And then, I guess, you know, when we're looking at traffic violations, know that, you know, we're probably not typically thinking about parking tickets, but I know for my part, you know, whether it's, you know, Mount Lake Terrace residents or business owners, you know, as we begin to see more sort of pockets of concentration here in town center or down on Van Rye, seeing some complaints about safety, you know, cars double parked or access to certain zones. Just wondering if you can speak to the, you know, the parking ticket dynamic, especially in the town center or greater town center? And I'll stop asking questions now. Thank you.
Well, do that, do that in reverse. The statistics for the parking violations are not in the statistics, but we can bring them back to you next time. I'm certain that you'll, that's a geographic issue, and I think the areas you identified is probably where you're going to see most of the violations being written. Domestic violence, I think during the pandemic, people were trapped in their houses, and I think it's a common sense conclusion that probably attributed to a lot of the rise we saw in that dynamic. As far as thefts, burglary, and auto thefts, I'm going to lay that strictly on the feet of the fentanyl and the addiction problem we face in our streets right now. A lot of that is driven by people wanting money to buy drugs. There's no mystery there. That's a problem we've seen for years. It just seems to be at an apex right now. Unfortunately, a lot of the de-policing that went on in terms of narcotics coincided with the flood of fentanyl across our entire area. So it's kind of like a terrible perfect storm for that. We're still suffering from that, and again, it's a regional problem, not unique to the state of Washington or anywhere else.
And on catalytic converters specifically?
Same thing. Interesting, that really taking a two-pronged approach in terms of state, catching the fellows in the middle of the night, cutting off catalytic converters is always problematic, simply because of when it occurs and how quickly they seem to be so skilled at getting those off the cars. What we've been doing now is looking at the people that are purchasing these things and requiring some ID to sell them. Obviously, if you come into a metal purchaser and you have a whole pickup full of catalytic converters, the first question I would ask you is, where did you get all those, and how did you get them? Unfortunately, that's not, question that was not being asked. It needs to be asked, and it needs to be tracked. And that's one of the, one of the ways that the, we've enforced it on the state level, and the legislature has been very gracious in terms of talking about that and trying to get some legislation passed that we can track it better. I think that will address the problem eventually, as will the reform of the narcotics enforcement. I think we've attacked that situation from a variety of angles, and we'll continue to.
Anyone else? Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for protecting our neighborhood. I feel really protected. I know that if there's a call or a problem in the neighborhood, your department's up there in minutes. And really, thank you very much for that. I think it's important, because, you know, sometimes major things don't happen all the time, but it only takes one time to be major. Like five blocks up from me, when the lady was beaten with a frying pan and killed. And then, probably five years before that, that person, I forget what his name was, they did a movie on him that was the fire, the guy that set fires everywhere, and they did a movie on him, Heller or something. What was his name?
His name was Keller.
Keller, yeah. And then that was just five blocks up from me, and he set the lady's house on fire. And that's an interesting story, because someone was driving on the freeway about, like, I don't know, 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning, saw a house on fire, pulled off to 20th, went over, went to her house and pulled her out, saved her life. Kind of interesting. So, you know, just one bad person can affect us, really. And so I just want to appreciate you being around, being out there, and taking care of us. So thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Go ahead, Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo the thank you. I appreciate the leadership, and the true testament to leadership is one, he has the nerve to be on vacation, so congratulations. That said, I was wondering if you could give us any feedback on the trespassing, if we've had any trespassing violations? We know that that's still kind of under review. We passed something, but I believe it's still being reviewed, and so just keeping our eye on that.
We've only had to use that particular ordinance one time, a problematic individual that was excluded from City Hall for a time, and we've not had any repeat problems with that. So no, that was, thank you for passing that, and it was very well-written, well-crafted, and that one time was absolutely a success story. If the fact it hasn't happened again is any proof of that.
Well, I'm just glad that we're using photos, and you guys have been using photos longer, with the new staff members and so forth, because, you know, it's nice to see faces, so that if you do run into them, you know that, you know, they're part of our family. So, thank you. All right. Anyone else before we go on to the next, because it's getting a little late?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone need a break before we go to this next one? Two-minute break, okay? Two and a half minute break. All right, we're back. And the next presentation is the review of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group with our senior planner, Jonathan Morales.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Matsumoto Wright, Mayor Proton Wall, members of the council. My name is Jonathan Morales, Senior Planner, City Mount Lake Terrace. Purpose of today's meeting is to provide an overview of our draft Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group work plan, and also review recommendations, staff recommendations for participants to serve on a Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group. As you know, our public participation plan informs the public participation program for the Comprehensive Plan Update. This includes the formation and monthly convening of a Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group that's made up of community members and interested parties. So as far as the work plan that we've developed, CPAC members will serve as a sounding board for ideas and opportunities, and will make recommendations to the Mount Lake Terrace Planning Commission and City Council based on their review of preliminary and draft materials. The CPAC will be instrumental in helping city staff develop and/or confirm the vision, goals, policies, and actions of the Comprehensive Plan, as well as other related content. It's important to note that the advisory group is purely advisory. There's no voting. It's a recommendatory body, providing recommendations. no voting. It's a recommendatory body, providing recommendations to the Planning Commission and thereby the City Council. We are not subject to the Open Public Meetings Act since it isn't an advisory committee. Meetings will be facilitated by staff and the consultant team, OTAC. Meeting minutes will be taken and provided on a webpage. And there will be a public comment period at the end of each meeting. The last 10 minutes of each meeting, there will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide any testimony that they have. And we will also accept written public testimony as well. And meetings will be open to the public, and they will not be recorded. So, as it stands now, the CPAG will meet monthly, tentatively on the fourth Wednesday of the month. We are looking at the right meeting time for that, as far as whether it's the second Wednesday of the month or the fourth. Since we are bringing a lot of these meeting topics to Planning Commission and City Council, as far as getting the right date will be essential for efficiency and also just to make sure we're meeting our timelines. Meetings will be hybrid format, so in-person and virtual. We encourage in-person participation. There will be some meetings that will require in-person participation, but we feel that just having the hybrid format will provide more accessibility and allow more participation. Currently, we anticipate 12 meetings starting September 2023 and lasting until August 2024.
Go ahead, Councilmember Salmore.
Okay.
All right.
So, yes. So, our first meeting is tentatively scheduled for September 27th, beginning at 6:30. Currently, meetings are between 90 minutes and two hours. And this first meeting will be 90 minutes. So, at this first meeting, the goal will be to determine what is the most efficient time that works for members of this advisory group, as far, and also whether it's the second Wednesday of the month or the fourth Wednesday. Meeting topics, as I stated, will inform what gets presented to Planning Commission and City Council. So, the first meeting, the purpose of this meeting will be an introductory meeting with a review of the existing visioning work in process, go over state and regional planning requirements for the Comprehensive Plan Update, introduce our plan framework and outline, and gather feedback on potential goals related to each element in the Comprehensive Plan, and introduce the city's assigned growth targets from Snohomish County. So, with that being said, staff would like to recommend the following names for consideration on the CPAG. The first recommendation is Carla Brown. Carla Brown is the director of the Concern for Neighbors Food Bank. Cassandra Dom is a Mallick Terrace community member. And I'll just share some brief notes from Cassandra. So, Cassandra moved to Mallick Terrace in 2016 and started a family here. She's excited about the growth that she's seen since moving here, and wants to be a part of that continued growth and planning for this and the next generation. She's passionate about making Mallick Terrace the best it can be for the current and future residents, ensuring that all community types are included in planning to ensure it will meet their needs. Cassandra wants Mallick Terrace to be a city that her family is proud to be a part of, and where they can access the social and economic infrastructure that they need. Cassandra has a background in substance use and mental health field, as well as working with trustees and, yes, as a project manager. Third name is Chris Collier. Chris Collier is the Alliance for Affordable Housing Program Manager at HASCO, Housing Authority of Snohomish County. Dwayne Landsberg of Landsberg Quality Homes is a local developer here of several developments. Keith Edholm is a commissioner on the Recreation and Parks Advisory Commission. We're excited to have a youth participant as part of this process. So, Keo Peterson of Mallick Terrace High School. Keo is a high school student and a member of the Gender and Sexuality Alliance Club. Michelle Sanashaw is the vice chair of the Arts Advisory Commission. Scott Matsuda is a commissioner of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission. Vezvi Cashin is a Mallick Terrace community member, and again, I'll share some brief notes. So, Vezvi is a retiree originally from Zambia. Let's see. Has experience working in adult education within the Seattle Colleges system, and has also worked amongst senior citizens, providing pro bono services for seniors who have no family or very limited finances as a power of attorney. Vezvi feels that housing and economic development are key issues that our region is facing, so they're excited to participate along those lines. And they've lived in Mallick Terrace for less than a decade, and has been impressed at the progress and growth that has been achieved within the city. And then Joe Woods is of Pacific Public Affairs. I have him here as TBD, but actually just confirmed today that he is interested in being a part of this process. So, I would like to present a recommendation to appoint him. And then lastly, prior to 4:00 p.m. today, we did receive another community member expressing interest. So, I followed up with them to get some more information. So, I would like to present, they're not on this list, but Barbara Mendez is a resident of Mallick Terrace since she was a toddler, graduated from Mallick Terrace High School, has a bachelor's in urban planning, and currently works in environmental consulting. Barbara's passionate about the environment, community development, and transportation, enjoys learning about different ways cities are combating and mitigating climate change, has a specific interest in placemaking and importance of open space. And she was drawn to the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group because she thought it would be a great opportunity to be better involved with the community and make a positive impact on the city, as well as further develop knowledge in various areas of urban planning in a collaborative way. And then finally, we will have liaisons on the Planning Commission and City Council. So, we do plan to present at the August 28th Planning Commission meeting, a similar presentation, and also hope to appoint a liaison at that meeting for Planning Commission. And then finally, a City Council liaison.
My question. So, sometimes we have to point out the obvious and not have the popular opinion. But, one, I'll ask you a few questions. Who put this committee together? I thought it was just going to be residents and business owners. It's almost like, and I don't know who the Pacific Public Affairs person is or what they do, but my goal here was, and I've never seen it stacked quite like this before, is we wanted citizens to talk about what they truly wanted. And some of the people on here, their job is to promote certain things. And so I see it as being a group think and being a seller of a product. And I do have some concerns. I know a couple people have been on boards like this before, which I think is great, and they either have a business here or they're residents. But you're having people coming in and telling people what to think. And that's one of my biggest pet peeves of being on council is, people like to tell us what to think, how to think, how to say it, and how to do it. And sometimes, we are not educated through AWC or through our own cities on how to think for ourselves. A lot of times, it's at-will, at-will, you know, we've got to have this, we've got to have this, this has to be this way. And sometimes, I think it gives us a narrow focus on what we really need. And so you're asking people outside our city. I could see them being consultants and coming into a meeting and giving their opinion. But they'd be there for 12 meetings, you know, and that's their job, is to promote certain things. And so, can you tell me how certain people got on here?
Sure.
And my main concern is because business and business owners and citizens, they're the ones who are going to be making this up. And then if you want them to be educated on something, you'd bring in those experts, and you'd make sure that you had experts from more than just what's in here. You'd have experts from different areas coming in and educating, because I've been on committees before too, and all of a sudden, you have the loudest speaker in the room, and they dictate exactly kind of what people think that they're supposed to do. And so a lot of times, we don't get the outcome that I think that we're actually wanting. So, I think if you keep it this way, it's going to be really interesting to see that outcome. And I think you'll see people that have thought they were coming in to tell you really about what they wanted for the city, and all of a sudden, they're inundated with other stuff they hadn't planned on learning about. And that's just something that is the elephant in the room, and I just think it needs to be pointed out. And can you tell me what Pacific Public Affairs, why would they be there? Are they a Mallick Terrace citizen? What are they there to promote? I'm thinking public affairs, but are you wanting them to educate our citizens on something specific?
As far as Joe Woods, I'm hoping either Jeff or Mayor Proton Wall, if you can share a bit more information.
Be happy to. Joe, so, one of the things that I think is important, and I appreciate the issues that have been raised, and I think there are potentially two that I see that kind of related to like the food bank and the affordable housing issue, I can be happy to talk to why I think maybe it's an important, and I agree, I mean, it could be consultants. Yeah. So, no. So, but Joe Woods, so one of the things that I think is important that we have somebody representing the people that are doing development in the community, and so that would be Dwayne Landsberg. He's a business owner in the community and doing development in the community, knows the community well, knows how to create a product that sells well in our city. And we're going to have to figure out how to put in a whole lot more homes in this city, 1,500 additional housing units beyond what we've already planned for. Which gets me to Chris Collier, who knows housing issues and knows middle housing issues, and knows housing code, and understands planning and affordability, and how we need to get to address, how we need to get to the point where we're addressing those issues and planning for housing affordability. As I've mentioned before, 0% to 30% of housing units that we plan for need to be subsidized housing, for subsidized. How are we going to, do we know how to do that? Do we have residents that understand how we're going to do that? I don't. I don't have any idea. I know that we need help in figuring that out. HASCO is, and HASCO is a big part of that solution, and Snohomish County is a big part of that solution. And we're providing funding through programs like HARP, or two programs like HARP that is figuring out how to distribute those affordable housing dollars on a regional basis, but not city by city. And yet, we have to figure out how to accommodate 0% to 30%. Anyway, I'll get off that soapbox for now, because we'll be hearing a lot more about that. But an additional, from the 30% to 80%, that's another half of, so a total of more than half of our housing units of that 1,500 need to be affordable housing. So, there is a critical need for us to understand how to address affordable housing as we address the comp plan update. Chris Collier can provide that insight. Joe Woods is, so there's the developers, but there's the investors also, people that are going to invest in this community and figuring out how, what we do, is it going to pencil out? If it doesn't pencil out... Right. I mean, we want, how do we get a grocery store? How do we get that, how do we achieve the vision that we have for this community? We have these big dreams, where, you know, I keep saying we're a little city with big dreams, and we have all these things we want to accomplish, right? How are we going to do that? Well, how are we going to pay for things like Main Street and the parks and recreation programs, and all the services we want to provide, and all these dreams we have for addressing arts and culture and events and all these, anyway. It's, yeah, right. So, that's, so how do we do that? We're going to pay for it through additional revenue to the city. How are we going to pay for addition, how are we going to get additional revenue to the city? Economic development. How are we going to get economic development? How are we going to track the type of businesses and the development we want to see here in Mallick Terrace? We've got to talk to the investors. They're going to be putting the money into the city to be able to build the development, the type of development we want to see. And so, it's important to have somebody representing the investment community, and Joe Woods fills that bill as one of the, representing one of the groups that is investing in the city.
Go ahead. So, this being a work session, then, I'll just, so, seeing this for the past 23 years, we've always had that kind of idea coming. And we all know that there's never going to be enough housing, right? That's what we keep on hearing, and we were told that we have to have this much housing, and we have to have this. Well, cities are finding ways around it now, and they're looking at different things that we haven't even tried to discuss here. But we've had committees and different things, and we still have our downtown. And so, a lot of times, it's all good and well that we're going to have certain people that certain people want, but we're still ending up with a whole bunch of apartments, and we have concerns with that. And we've talked for years, we didn't want it missmashed, we didn't, we want it very succinct, and it's just not coming into fruition. And I think you're banking the certain people that you've put on here that they're going to do that. You've got citizens on here that are trying to get educated on what's best for their city, and then you have other people coming in telling them what's best for their city. And it's just, I just think that they should be more of a consultant than on a committee. And it should be stacked with citizens, because we're voted in by the current neighbors, residents, right now. And everybody's telling me, oh, Lord, you have to think about all those thousands of people that are coming in. I don't know those thousands of people yet. I've been voted in by the residents of this city, our neighbors, to help protect them and see what they want. And so that's why I'd like to see it stacked with more residents and business owners, instead of having people come in and saying, you've got to do it this way. So, as a resident, are you going to even be able to have a say? Because they're always going to have a comeback. You know, if I'm on this board and I say, I don't want this neighbor to build over here, somebody's going to say, well, you've got to do it. So, sometimes I think we're not letting people have say on certain committees. And we've all been in committees like that before. So, I'm saying my say, but I still don't know who put the list together and who had input into it.
So, these names were derived from our Interested Parties list, which was previously presented as part of the public participation plan. We were informed that council would like to see representation by our existing boards and commissions. That's why we have representation from the Art PAC, Arts Advisory Commission, and DEIC. Typically, for contacts, advisory groups for comprehensive plans solely include planning commissioners and other people that are part of this process. So, by opening this to community members and getting three community members who express interest, plus a high school student, I'd say there's a nice balance here. It was important to get representation from the real estate development community, affordable housing. As you know, with the Growth Management Act and new legislation, these are the main topics that we needed to address through this Comprehensive Plan. So, as far as getting this group together, we wanted to have people who have knowledge and expertise in this area. There's other avenues for community participation from the public. For example, we have the survey, but that's not the only way that we're going to get community participation. We are planning to do an open house tentatively in October. So, throughout this process, there's going to be many opportunities for public participation. So throughout this process, there's going to be many opportunities for public participation that's not related to this advisory group. But there'll be opportunities for community input. This is simply an advisory group that's going to inform how we develop the plan, how we develop policy, policies and goals. And then present to planning commission and city council. So. Yeah. Any other questions?
Anyone else? Councilmember Payne Donovan and then Murray.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Jonathan. I appreciate this presentation and I think as you just laid out tracks with, with all the work you've done up until this point. So I think it makes sense and I, I also just have a couple of quick comments here. I think if there were a gap in the current list, and I recognize that you're still doing outreach and folks are still populating on this list. If there were another, say, small business or, you know, Mount Lake Terrace business owner, you know, we've got some, got a local or Mount Lake Terrace developer. But if there were some, some other sort of brick and mortar or, or otherwise a business owner that I think helped flush the, the list out. And yeah, I just want to also express my appreciation for, for the, the things that Mayor Protem just lined out. I think we, we really do need to understand how we're going to meet these, these goals that, that PSRC and, and the state are, are putting us to, to work doing with this comp plan update. So, thank you.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jonathan. Appreciate kind of all of the thought. And I know we had a chance to look at all of the folks that you had engaged with and reached out to. And I think hopefully, I know you guys have reached out to the Chamber of Commerce and some other, so hopefully, you know, Councilmember Payne Donovan's comment about, I think the business community is a good one. And would love to see one of our local businesses represented in the conversation so we can understand their perspectives and challenges as well. I guess a couple of other thoughts that are losing at 9:15 at night. But I guess one, I wanted to express gratitude that we are including one of our local high school students. That is something that I know we've talked about and looked for ways to, to do. And I'm really excited that this presents an opportunity for that. They are the folks that are going to experience, you know, the decisions that we make likely for the longest period of time. And so I think in encouraging them to participate and understanding their perspective is awesome and exciting. So commend you for that. And I guess just my other observation, I guess I just want to make sure that, so I mean, this is an advisory committee that is that invite. And I will say all of our commissioners are residents of the community. And so they will then make a presentation to our planning commission who are also all residents of our community. And then that will come to the council. We are also all residents of Mount Lake Terrace. So I mean, I do, I do, and there will be, to your point, I think lots of opportunities for public engagement and you're going to continue to talk about that and appreciate. I thought we had really good engagement at, was it National Night Out? Yes, National Night Out. We've had so many fun events lately. But so just, I mean, I'm really grateful that we are trying to understand so many perspectives to not only do the things that we are mandated to do, but also to do the things that we really want to do and that we are, I think, very aligned on as a council. And so I, I look forward to seeing the recommendations that come forth and having a good, robust conversation about them, I'm sure. So thank you.
Yeah, we did reach out to Chamber of Commerce folks. So that's going to be the next big major push to get representation from local business community. We also reached out to our faith-based communities in Mount Lake Terrace. Did not hear back, but as far as this group, the max was 12, but we can talk about upping it just a bit to ensure there's adequate representation. So there's still a recruitment process until end of August. So that's the next major step here. As far as our ask today, next steps is approval of CPAG members through consent agenda on August 21st council meeting. We'd like to ask council to authorize the city manager to appoint any additional advisory group members. If applicable, by August 31st. And then our first CPAG meeting will be September 27th from, at 6:30 PM. And. With that, if there's any other questions?
So this will be this list with the addition of the third person?
Sorry.
The, the third.
Community member.
Community member.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I'll update that with the new.
And then you said you wanted 12, but already that third community member makes it up to 13. And then if we have a someone from the chamber, that's a small business, that'd be 14. So.
So 12, not including liaisons?
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, not including any of the commission liaisons?
Well, planning commission or city council.
Oh, okay. That also, we have two more. I thought it was a really railroaded list when I looked at it. We have the young, we have people who have been in the city for a short number of time. And I think the other one was here for a much longer time.
Yes.
And, and then so once we get a small business person in there, I, I think we've got all the corners covered. In my opinion at least, so. But anyways, does anyone have anything else to add? Shall we just have this, oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I find myself in an interesting position, having served on the planning commission for 12 years, 14 years, it was 14 years, wasn't it? 14 years. Because first of all, obviously I have a clear passion for planning and development issues for the city. But, but having served on the planning commission, there's, there's that part of me. In fact, you know, so we went through the, the town center plan, planning process, updating the sub area plan. You know, we created a task force and my initial feeling about that task force was, isn't that the role of the planning commission? But I did, but having gone through that process, that task force played a valuable role. And so I see, you know, so there's a part of me that feels like this is the job of the planning commission to do this. But I also appreciate, again, the role that the task force played in the sub area plan and how it could potentially play a role in this comp plan update process. I, so, so having said that, I can, I appreciate the, the role that the advisory group will play. But then looking at the timeline, I would ask that we move that timeline up a little bit because I would really like to get it to the planning commission sooner than September of next year. So that it's not just rubber stamping what the advisor group did and then coming to the council and just rubber stamping what the planning commission recommends.
We need it by December, right?
Right.
The comp plan is due by December 2024. We do plan on meeting monthly with planning commission. So whatever comes out of the CPAG will be presented in, in depth with the planning commission.
No, I appreciate that. And right. And so there will be an ongoing role that will all be playing and the community will be playing and shaping this. So that hopefully it is pretty consensus driven and most of all of us will be ready to agree to most of it by the time it gets to us. That said, I would like to make sure that the planning commission and the city council have sufficient time to really review, understand, delve into, and have input in that process as it comes to each of those two bodies. So as we're only liaisons serving on this advisory group, we as a body need to have our say in the process. And so I'd like to make sure that we do get, just move it up a little bit. So that we're getting, getting a final product to the planning commission in the summer to review and then recommend to the council. I'd like to see it to the council by September or sooner. So that the council has sufficient time to be able to discuss. And, and if it looks great and we're able to approve it in the end of September, October, great, but let's not count on that. Let's make sure that each of these two bodies have the time, provide sufficient time for us to consider and provide the input and direction that we ultimately feel that we need to have as we go.
Sure.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you. Can I ask a question kind of to both of you? Since I have not been through this process before and was not on the planning commission, this is new. So you talked about the advisory committee, you know, meeting monthly and then the planning commission being kind of updated throughout that process and being participatory in that feedback. I guess is it going to come back to the council at that same sort of cadence or during that time period? So that we can also, I guess, to, to Mayor Protem Wall's concerns about timeline. It feels like if we are having that ongoing conversation as pieces are worked through, that gives us time to have robust conversations, provide feedback that can be incorporated to where, to your point, hopefully by the time we get to a final version in front of us or to a version in front of us that is complete. As far as recommendations go, we've already provided so much feedback and had so much conversation that there's not a huge body of work to continue to do there. So is that, I don't, I don't know if that is the plan or if that's normal or if that isn't, that doesn't work, but I would love to hear more about that.
No, and that's great. We, we are aware that city council would like to see materials well in advance, not just when they're fully baked. So we will definitely apprise the council. Probably not every month, but every other month. It also is dependent on the meeting topic and what, for example, land use and housing would be a major thing that we'd like more council participation on. All the elements are important, of course, but as far as like GMA requirements and meeting those targets and deadlines and making sure we're addressing that through this comp plan update. We definitely will make sure that we're cluing in all the required advisory groups here and, and our planning commission and council.
All right. Do I see, Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I was concerned we were about to wrap this up. And I want to make sure we pull on a couple of items, I think we learned today. One is just a visual prop and then we'll see where we go from there. So earlier in our very long meeting, we learned that 6% of Mount Lake Terrace identifies, it was listed broadly as black. Before that, I think we started off this meeting with public comment, public comments that pointed out that there was about 130 or so comments on the image I'm holding up right now. Some of those comments included, what's the problem? Someone else noted that we had a city staff say, what's the problem? We had a resident come back and take action. Now I'm looking at a list that's going to set the standard for the next 20 years. Now I'm going to walk cautiously here because I do not know how people identify on that list. But I only heard one person racialized and that person was not racialized as African-American, it was African. And that's not to say that they won't bring a black experience. Just want to recognize that 6% don't think maps out. Which is never identify problems without at least trying to come up with solutions. Mine in this case is to say, well, if in fact those 10 names in the next two that are listed on there will be discussed and their pools are limited, but thankfully there are black folks. I would just point out the liaisons do not get to add to the conversation. So I don't want to hear that that will be our remedy. Steve Woodard will fill position 12. I will sit there quietly and listen. And I do want to be the liaison for the record. The planning commissioner, we do have African-Americans, they too would have to sit and listen. It's those other 12 that I applaud Councilmember Sonmore for raising tough conversations. Because I too sit here and go, I'm sorry, was I supposed to be giving you names? Was that on me? Because like other council member here, just pointing out, many of us are new to this. So we're watching this unfold and it's not a good feeling to go, holy crap, did I just miss something that was absolutely significant? Because they might just be giving you feedback, but as I've learned, you know, we kind of listen to our feedback, going back to many of the points that have been raised. But the one that I care to raise is it's truly ironic that we would say that that list up there looks representative and not once ask, who are these people? Granted, we know a good percentage of those names, which just raises this higher as far as I'm concerned. Because at the end of it all, folks need to know why this is wrong. And it started with the pool itself, not who was doing the right thing or the wrong thing, was the damn building inviting? Right? You know what I mean? Like it's, it's, it's bigger than this, this, for whatever reason, green sheet. I guess we can't afford real color, which is a different discussion. Because I think you really need to see it, not shield it with whatever's going on here. But again, at the end of the day, 6%, and I sure as heck hope that that number grows. But at the end of it all, right now, I need that list to be at least intentionally considering who's not on it. And if that's the case, what are we going to do to make sure we hear from those folks? Because I can definitely hear the, we're going to have lots of opportunities. But I also remember for the last five years, we always say, where is everybody? Man, we gave them the opportunities and this is setting the standard for the next 20 years. So.
I appreciate that.
Problem identified, hopefully pathways considered. And I'm absolutely happy to be involved in any portion of coming up with solutions. So, thank you.
I appreciate that feedback. I will say, as far as forming this group, we utilize the existing interested parties list that we had, that we were using, that does not include data on racial ethnic makeup. So as far as I'm presenting these names, we also didn't have a formal application process. So we didn't attract that data. It really was a combination of using existing community participants that we, we've utilized in the past of their processes. But also identifying other community-based organizations in our community and reaching out to our local businesses and faith-based community. I think that's why it's important to note that we still are pushing throughout this month to ensure that there's adequate representation. So that's the challenge there and, and I'm here for the challenge. And yeah. I, I think there's more, more to be said there and I appreciate that feedback for sure.
Yeah. And if I could just, we did, we did also prioritize making sure that the, the boards and commissions are included. And while the city council liaison and the planning commission liaison will not be voting members, they'll just be participating in the discussion. The other members, including the DEIC, will be participating and will be voting. So just throwing that out there.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I just want to make sure, ask a question. I think I know the answer to, but I want to make, this was also something, I mean, not only did we have kind of, you know, curated lists and I, I think, I think the opportunity for feedback was at least asked. I think, I, I feel like I at least had the opportunity to, to take a look at some of that. But we also put it out publicly, right? We had a press release and we opened it up to the public and asked for folks to raise their hands.
Thank you for reminding me of that.
Okay. All right. I want to, so like folks have, I mean, we, we are trying to be really open, open to.
We utilize our existing communication channels. So social media, we did a news release that was published on MLT News. That news release also made it to the Economic Alliance of Soomish County in their newsletter. So it was communicated that way as well. And there were several follow-up posts from our communications manager to remind folks of ways to participate in this process. Not only just to survey, but also to consider participation on this advisory group. participation on this advisory group.
I did see it out of some of the listings that you mentioned, I have seen it, so. All right, anyone else? Councilmember Woodard?
Yeah, I do want to be clear, I appreciate the efforts that were made. I'm suggesting that, in a process that some of us are recognizing we don't even understand, that's a bit much to ask people to dedicate time on something they may not understand. And so, again, I am looking at my own personal responsibility, perhaps I should have realized, oh, folks aren't going to recognize that this is a huge opportunity. And now I'm saying, that moment's passed, I'm not saying throw the list out, by no means. What I'm suggesting is, and that's now recognized, we failed, and let's not do that again, which means whatever these notices and all that, that's not going to be enough. Clearly, it's not enough. It's not self-evident to anyone except some of us in this room, and I ain't on that list for the record. I'm still trying to understand what this really means, right? So that said, I would say, well, let's make sure that when we're offering these opportunities to get feedback, that we're very intentional about who we get in that room, and I don't need green people, I need fully vibrant, living-your-culture people, because that's what this city is, right? But we're using stale processes, so that might mean, hey, how about we host this in one of these churches? We just heard that Bethesda throws an awesome party, I bet they could rock a party at this, we get something out of it as well, right? So that's where I'm suggesting that, let's look at those types of remedies, not throw a list out. I recognize those were the constraints that we had, and nonetheless, at the end of the day, 6% of these folks have a right to still say, wait a minute, I meant to be involved. And we can't be like, ooh, sorry, that'd be the next 20 years.
Well, yeah. And again, these meetings will be open to the public.
Yeah.
There'll be public comment allowed during these meetings.
And for the record, Jonathan, I know you get this, brother, this is not about you and me, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I want to be clear, it's like, you're taking the heat right now, and it shouldn't be. I know you feel me, I know you're hearing me, I'm just saying, I am willing as an active member here to figure out, well, how do we make sure people know what's going on, right? I mentioned TikTok, and I wasn't kidding, right? Because it's like, people do not know what this is, and it's going to impact your great-grandkids on some levels, right? On some levels of just ownership, but please.
Councilmember Sonmore?
And thank you for bringing that up, because that's a good point. Jonathan, sometimes, especially me, when I throw out comments, it's to get us out of that group think and think outside of the box. So you did a very elegant job countering me, because I wasn't really looking for feedback per se, I was just looking for dialogue within our council, and so, thank you for saying that.
If there are names that you have, people in mind, feel free to shoot them my way. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. I don't see any other hands going up, so. We are having a long meeting, sorry if you guys better next them next, but at least we're not doing an hour and a half debate on something very small, like some cities right next door. All right, so next, next is the review of the Snoomish County Conservation District inter-local agreement for tree planting with Laura Reed.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Potem, and councilmembers. I do not have a presentation, I just have a very quick thing to bring before you, which is a small inter-local agreement with Snohomish Conservation District to plant street trees this fall. And we have 100 street trees that are paid for by grants from the DNR. This inter-local agreement is to pay for the planting of those trees. I believe that this is the most cost-effective way to deliver these services, because Snohomish Conservation District effectively matches our city funding, they don't charge us as much as their cost of delivery services, because they have other funding sources. They have a skilled crew of military veterans who do this kind of work all the time, and they also have an arborist on staff, which is a requirement of the grant, that the nursery stock be inspected as it comes in, so I can meet that requirement with Snohomish Conservation District. The cost for this work is $15,103.51, and $750,000 of that will be paid for by the Department of Natural Resources, and the rest will be picked up by the Stormwater Fund. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ILA with Snohomish Conservation District to provide tree quality control, deliver and plant 100 street trees in the fall of 2023, and this can be accomplished as part of the consent calendar at the next regular meeting. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions? Go ahead, councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks, Laura, I'm full support of this ILA, I love trees, and I have a question. And, you know, as we are experiencing record heat right now, as we're in the scariest of heat record-setting years so far, I think it's impossible to overstate how dire the heat that this planet is experiencing, if that made, if that sentence made any sense. I am asking you this question because, wondering, you know, as this region gets warmer, want to make sure, and we're sort of shifting climatic zones in terms of the types of plants that survive here, or, and will probably likely continue, continue to do well in this warming climate, are the tree types that will be planted here be resilient in future decades as immature?
Yes, I think that's a very good question. The tree species that are destined to be our new street trees were selected on the basis of their toughness and drought resistance. So I believe that these are trees that are going to be able to withstand the new climate, but of course, time will tell. But yes, that, we specifically chose trees that we thought could really handle being a street tree, because not every tree can live that life. It's tough to be a street tree. So, yes, we also have that, we also have kind of a backstop to the program, where if people do forget to water them, we check them out and, you know, get a watering truck out there, so we keep these trees alive.
Great, wonderful. Thank you for all you're doing to encourage canopy in this place, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have locations for our future trees with this?
Yes, as part of this, this development of this program, 72 people in the community have been recruited to become our tree stewards, and they, we have more than one tree that we were able to give to each person from the grant.
Oh, so this will be in their yard?
Yeah, it'll be in the right of way.
Oh, the right of way.
Yeah, yeah. And I just want to mention, like, sometimes, some programs just give trees to people to have them plant them, but we thought this would make the program more accessible, it would negate the risk of somebody hitting a gas line. So we're going to do utility locates right before this, we're going to let the folks who get the trees, put the stakes where they want the trees, we'll go and verify that, then the Snohomish County crew will come in and plant the trees after that.
Okay. Anyone else? Oh, councilmember Woodard?
I'm sorry, it's literally low-hanging fruit. I just have to say, I think you stumbled across a great ad campaign, not every tree is about that street life, and then you can tell us how to keep them safe and alive. Just saying, like, you just stumbled onto something, it would catch your attention, like, what? And then you would read it, and then it would get where we need to be, more trees in the world. I'm just saying, not every tree is ready for that street life. That was great.
I know, it's good.
Can I, is it September you're starting to plant them? With the heat?
The schedule is that, you know...
You sent it out, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I sent a schedule out to everybody. But, yeah, we'll do the utility locate, we'll verify the locations, we'll work with property owners that need help, we'll get everything straightened out, and then we will plant the trees the last week of October or the first week of November, because by then, we think it's going to be raining and the trees will be watered, then they'll be much more likely to survive, because they'll be dormant.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And so this is going to be on the consent?
Yes.
Calendar next, on Monday night, good, all right. So, everyone is okay with it, right?
Do you have a question? Okay.
Yeah, we need more trees.
You'd be surprised.
Yeah.
Anything else, or, okay, great, thank you very much, and...
Thank you. All right, Jesse? Yeah, review of the contract amendment for the FCS group. So we have our public works director, Jesse Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Potem and council for having me. I don't have a presentation per se as a PowerPoint, but I can run over this hopefully quickly with you. It's pretty simple, we have a contract for a rate study that was approved by you in the 2324 budget, and we didn't think that we needed to add capital facilities charges to it, because it was 2019 when we last did a rate study, but looking at the numbers, the best thing we can do is while we have the data fresh, is to go through and look at those rate studies and make recommendations to you with this, with FCS on the rate study, what we believe the rate should be for the various utilities. The total cost of the addition of this contract, I believe, is $24,913, and that brings the contract total to $96,150. Can I answer any questions for you?
Any questions? Oh, we need to get it done.
It'll be on, yeah, on Monday's consent agenda for you, hopefully. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We could have had the two of you up early. Okay, so next is the review of the August 21 meeting agenda, everyone's reviewed that, anyone else? Okay, then council comments? Anyone have council? Good night. Anyone have council comments? I just want to say that I'm looking at social media, and when I see something dangerous happening, or something that should be looked at, I contact our city manager, and we have a great team going on right now, because it gets done the next day. And so, last night, I saw that there were some razor blades near our entrance. And in the morning, and Jesse's gone, but apparently, our public works department and our street sweeper and our police department, they were all working on it. And people posted that, oh my gosh, the city is actually working on this. So I think that, hopefully sooner or later, people will understand that we don't live in our little silos up here at City Hall, that we really do listen to the public, and, you know, we're residents of this city too, and we want the best for everybody. So I'm glad that, and then I drove by, and I was looking, drove slowly and looked down to see if there were, apparently there were pink razor blades. And that can, you know, not only if you're bicycling, because they put it apparently in the rocks and the gravel areas. So if you have your pets walking that location too, this is not good. So, so thank you to our city manager for listening to me when I send things over. Councilmember Ryan?
On that note, on that note, I just wanted to thank, there's three citizens that walk up and down 58th daily, picking up garbage on their walk. Thank you very much. Kind of nice, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, anyone else before we adjourn? We're going to make it before 10 o'clock, hey! We are adjourned, thank you.
All right.